I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Who do you call me? Lord, the President, Charles Vance, President, Phoebe Harless, Commissioner, K.K. Matthews, Commissioner? Is this the meeting we have to... Did Darrell come in late last meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Was that in the meeting that was here?
I'm thinking about that.
Well, as far as this first motion, we have three minutes of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on May the 3rd, 2018 at 6:00 P.M. But we...I wanted to go ahead and make sure that we had any minutes that Darrell didn't make the minutes. So I need a motion to approve that.
Okay.
I'll move.
Listen. I'm sorry, Sam.
Fine.
Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the special session of Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on May 21st, 2018 at 14:00. Does it move?
Aye.
I say aye. On public comment, we had Doris Sharp, who can't make it today. We'll go ahead and discuss if there's any possible action. Region two, Lisa Wells.
Hi, I have a couple items to talk about. One is that all of the party logo on my project. First, I do have a drawdown of the project. Any amount of women are 76,875.43. And this includes three invoices, one invoiced in terms of construction, one for Ron Flore, the attorney for legal services, as well as one for region two planning development. Can I say that total woman count? I'm sorry. 176,857.43 cents.
And it's drawn on 10, right?
This would be drawdown number...
Nine.
Nine. Yes.
Hey, I need a motion to approve the drawdown request. Get his permission signed.
I'll move. And the second item I have...
You said that was number nine?
This is number nine.
Hey, on top says 10, though.
Actually, it is. I have a typo on the first page. I'll make note of that. My apologies.
No problem.
You were absolutely right, Mary.
I'm sorry.
It's actually good counting. The second item that I have is this regarding...this is for Lower Mudd Phase One. Last year, we did apply for Lower Mudd Phase Two for the Community Development Block Grant. And unfortunately, that particular application did not get awarded. However, the Development Office did announce last week that they're opening up this year's Community Development Block Grant application cycle again, that the grant applications need to be submitted by the end of July. And we're wanting to know if you were interested in us again submitting to the Community Development Block Grant for Lower Mudd Phase Two projects.
Yeah, the only...you don't care about doing that. Yeah, we don't have any problem with that. The only problem is we don't have any local money. I know when the original was $100,000 in here from the commission. So when we submit that, we'll have to submit that with that dollar.
We can do a change of funding scenario, and we have some options, and I can take that back. But we can look at tweaking that. I don't know if you wanted to make a motion to reflect it in your minutes.
Well...
It's not required.
Yeah, well, yeah. I don't care to do it. I like to have it on the agenda for that particular thing when we do it. And we were kind of looking at drawdown requests and things like that. So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, because of the timeline, and we'll be working with our office, we'll be having to do a public...because it's a recent agreement, one public meeting, and that would have to be on the next meeting in January like this. I believe that's what the data is. We will have to have...we'll be working to do that. If we can schedule that beforehand, we have the public hearing. Just because we need the tight timeline that they've kind of put us under.
Yeah, and we have no problem supporting it.
That's fine. We'll have grant resolution, and everything will be official with that. I didn't know if that's something you were interested in doing. It's not required. We just need to give the go-ahead verbally from the commission to say we could go forth with preparing an application.
We're fine with that.
Okay. And I'll make note of the funding scenario. Jessica Shaw from our office will be primarily working on the application as well. She's fairly new to the office, but I just wanted to get that name out there so you know if someone calls from our office with regard to scheduling the public meeting and any of the other events that need to occur, that's who we'll be working with. Of course, I will be here at the meetings as well, and I look forward to working on that. Hopefully, we'll be lucky this time. All right. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda...I'm going to move the Lincoln PSD down a little bit so we can take care of some of these other things a little quicker there. Next on is priority transit. I just want to bring this...we pay $500,000 per day.
No, $200,000 total for five.
Twenty-five. Five times five, $200,000.
Yeah. I mean, total, though, not a day.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So I just...I wanted to make sure the commission is okay if they had not entertained a motion to approve that, if that's what the commission wants to do.
I'll say aye.
Listen. On next... Next, we had a request...Mary, officially, airport board.
On the lately...I don't know...her name's April. What the Regional Airport Authority Board called and wanted a updated appointment for Alan Holder. He...the last appointment was 2012. So I'm assuming if you wanted to...
Just a six-year appointment then?
I don't know. She said they just noticed it, so...and I didn't...that was one of them that didn't know and check on it. So I didn't really...
I mean, I...you know, I didn't even...I can't even remember if it was put in law or not, but I did. And I didn't know if there was something, if the commission would go ahead with that or if they wanted to look at other...
Didn't we advertise for him like we do the others?
Well, that's the only thing I was thinking about is because there...you know, members of the community may...there may be somebody that would be interested in it. So it would be my suggestion to take that permission and we're going to make a motion to exercise this position and see if we...and then he can go ahead and apply and decide. Is that all right? Is there a motion?
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Comments? Next on the agenda is a...
Sheriff in here to vote? No, he's not going to vote.
But it's a request from Sheriff Lindblom to hire... Do we have that in here?
Yeah.
Make me agree with her.
Yeah.
This is dated May the 9th from the sheriff, and he's requesting that we approve the hiring of Nathaniel Davis in the position of entry-level deputy sheriff.
Rex, has he already went through the training? Was he on the list and everything?
Yes, he's got all the references.
Yeah.
And everything's clear on his background and everything?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to hire?
I'll move.
Listen. I was saying, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And this...when will this take effect?
Is he ready to start?
He probably has two weeks of it.
Two weeks of now? Is it okay...what, that'd be about the...
The payroll, yeah. Could we do one...
The start of the payroll after two weeks?
Yeah.
That's when you'll start.
The 16th, no? That wouldn't be...it'd have to be the end of the month, then. If he has to get two weeks, we either need him to start on the 16th or the 30th.
The 30th should be fine.
Okay.
All right. So that'll be effective on the 30th. Thank you. Now, next on the agendas, Lincoln PSD. I know Gary, did you want to speak before we got into this?
Yes, please. I wanted to come and, I guess...it has really bothered me over what's went on the last couple of months, and I think it's gotten way out of proportion. And I wanted to come and dress me personally, and then we'll get into the meat, potatoes, and the boards. And I wanted to talk...you know, about 10 years ago, I've been blessed. I have a good job that pays a livable wage. I have health care, so if my family or I are sick, we can get a doctor. I have a pension, so I have retire with dignity. And I wanted to start helping my community. I live in Lincoln County because I love Lincoln County. I live here because I want to. And I went back, started looking at what all projects I've worked on in the last 10 years. And it has really bothered me. There's people on social media trashing me, and they don't even know me. I mean, just...for the life...now, I don't understand why we want to tear each other down. We got to work together. And I just want to talk about what all I have personally worked on. Now, they've been an army of people that's worked on this, but there's only two people that has worked on every project. You know, the Griffithsville project, we ran a water line from Hamblin to Griffithsville, which was $3.5 million. Then we ran a water line from Griffithsville, Old Woodville, Bolger, to Lower Mudd. $7.5 million. We're currently putting pipe in the ground at Lower Mudd, $4.3 million. That comes to $15.2 million of money that has been brought into this county. Out of that $15.2 million, right at $10 million of that was grant money, free money that was given to us. It's took an army of people down. But there's only two people in this world that's worked on every project, and that's Bruce Tully and Gary McAllister. Now, we had an army of people, but we have worked 10 years helping our county because we wanted to give back. We're currently working on Phase Two of Lower Mudd, which is going to come up to 17...over $17 million. And in reality, we have gotten over 1,000 families water. That's what we've worked on. We get $150 a month. They ain't a day goes by that we don't deal with something with PSD. We go out...you know, the law says that we can get mileage for driving. We can get reimbursement. We've never done that. It costs us money to be on the PSD. And we try. No, am I perfect? Absolutely not. I am not perfect. And I went farther. I've been on the Lincoln EDA Board Vice President for over 10 years. And some of the projects, you know, we have worked on the Kidney Dials here in the county. We've worked on the Goodwills, Emerald Gardens, Leadership Southern, Rock Creek Development. I have been to...met with the general. I've been to the State Development Office. I am constantly meeting with people, trying to grow Lincoln County. And it has really bothered me that all the negativity...and all I've ever wanted to do is help the county, the county that I love. I love this county, and I wish this county loved me as good as I love it, because I have worked tirelessly to help my county because I love this county. And it has really bothered me. But think of that, over 1,000 families that we have worked to get them water. We have currently, last summer, hired an engineer to try to get funding to build a new water plant. That water plant was built in 1962. I went around...my dream was to build one big plant, maybe at the Mud River Lake, and have for the whole county. But I had a lot of resistance on that. So we're working over there, and that includes building a new 300,000-gallon tank and a new plant. Now, whether it ever comes to reality, I don't know. It takes years to get these projects. We've recently hired an engineer last summer to start Phase One of sewer in Allen Creek. And our goal is just to have Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, just continue to do phases. Because when we're out doing economic development, the number-one problem is sewer. And we're working on that. And we spend 10, 20 hours a week sometimes on our county. And Bruce...Bruce has been through a lot, a lot, over there at the Lincoln PSD. And, you know, I see people saying, "You're lying in your pockets." I'm not lying in my pockets. I'm not getting rich over there. I got a little over $3,000 for the year and spent...I ain't paid $1,500 back in taxes when I did my taxes. You know, I do it because I love this county. It really bothers me. April, April the 26th Board Meeting, I got up at 3:00 a.m. that morning, drove to Pittsburgh, and worked all day long. I have a job...I work at least 50 hours a week on a day job. I literally work 16 hours a day trying to help people. And I got in a vehicle and drove back, and I made it back before the end of the meeting, but I was on the phone the whole time. But I do...I feel do my job, and it really bothers me when people are out slandering me and saying I haven't, because I have. And now I'm ready to talk about PSD.
Okay, just let the record reflect that we did receive the copy of the information from the FOIA. Terry brought that to us today. Well, I think, you know, the reason that I asked for you guys to be here was we did have some complaints. I mean, I'm sure that you're aware of that. And I think the thing that concerned me as Commissioner and probably the other commissioners was safety issues and things like, you know, emergency numbers not being active and things of that nature. And I wanted to kind of get some idea...I guess the best way would be to let the other people here talk, and then let's kind of summarize it at the end as far as...but I think the commission's concerns really were more in the line of safety and to make sure that things were being addressed when things happened and things like that. And that was our concern.
And everything is a process, and sometimes it's...we spent five years getting funding for Lower Mudd. That's a $4.5 million project, and four million of it is grant money. We only borrowed 5 million. And sometimes...and I thought a phone call and got jumped...I mean, extremely jumped on because the fire hydrant was going to be 100 foot to the left or right. And I'm thinking, "We just worked tirelessly for five years to get water." You know, thank the good Lord that you've got the water. Sometimes it's a tough job.
Any of the other board members want to speak or say anything before I ask the other... I had...I think Ken's name was on the thing. Or you want to go ahead and speak?
I have a few things here, and forgive me, K.K., I'm going to...if you can pass that down. I think this is...so you might have to...it might be a little bit harder to follow to that. And... Well, I...
You can give it back.
I was going to say...
You're not saying?
So just to start off, to update you on everything, you're all well aware that I requested the FOIA back on April the 26th. And I did finally get a call on June the 1st that I could come pick it up, which that was on a Friday, and I made it this past Monday on the 4th to pick that up. And so it's been quite a...quite a job to sort through that information. So just to tell you a little bit, I think...I don't know if you all have a copy of the original FOIA that from me. Hold on just a minute, and I can give you those. But the original FOIA is right here. This is just a copy of it. So that's what was requested on my original FOIA now. The first one, we'll look at minutes from each monthly Lincoln PSD Water Board meeting from April 17...April 2017 to present. I got minutes, and I was missing two regular meetings and 10 special meetings. That's 12 meetings right there in a year. So I was missing at least 12 for a whole year there. Monthly credit card statements from April 17, April 2017 to present. I never did get anything complete that I could tell. We were missing December 2017, February 2018, and March 2018. And I never did come across...I don't believe we come across a credit card statement that had all of the pages. You'll see on some of the pages, it will say one of four, you know, two of four, three of four. We would get one, maybe, but not the complete statement. Copies of store receipts, numerous receipts missing or copies with no amounts or dates Documentations showing each month's expenses incurred by Lincoln Public Service District from April 2017 to present. I didn't receive any information showing any of the monthly expenses. So I don't know who they pay or what...who they pay what. The documentation showing the percent of water loss incurred by Lincoln Public Service District, no documentation received at all showing water loss. Monthly bank statements for all banking accounts associated with the Lincoln Public Service District. Those are a little haphazard, so I really can't say that I didn't receive everything, but I can't say that I did. I didn't see...there were no copies of any checks to show, you know, who was paid what. So I have no idea, looking at those statements, what, you know, what those, you know, who those went to. Number of customers' accounts that are 30 days or more delinquent, I didn't receive any information on that. Customer meters that had been removed, I received no information on that. Detailed summary of payroll from employees past and present from April 1st, 2017 to present. Specifically, this should include dates of hire, individual wages, benefits, and breakdown of all overtime for each employee. I received a year's glance at hire with no hire dates, no wage information, no benefits information. And copies of all checks or reimbursements made to board members and/or employees along with supporting receipts or documentation. I received no copies of any checks at all. So that is where...that's where we stand with the FOIA. And it was quite a mess, and it's still a process of going through what we actually got, which there was so much that we didn't receive. I also have...and this, I don't have copies of that. I'll pass this along. We've had numerous people come to us with, if you'll notice, up in the top there, there gets water usage. And we've had several customers bring it to our attention that they're receiving water bills with no usage. They're living in their homes, they're using, you know, they're obviously using water, and it shows no usage. If you see up there on the very top, does that make sense? You see it there? So they get bills that show no water usage, and then the next month, they might get another one with no water usage. But then the next...so they're paying the minimum balance, and then, you know, they might get flagged with a big bill, so they're paying, you know, again for that. So there's...so the water meters...I don't work at the water company, but I'm not sure how that goes. Also, now, I'd like to have this back, but this is a copy of things. I filed a formal complaint with the PSC, and so I get things online that tell me what, if any, documentation has been added to it, whether it be from the PSD or from someone at the PSC. And if you'll notice, this is actually where the Public Service Commission sent notice to the PSD that they had...a formal complaint had been filed. And if you'll notice there, halfway down through that first email, it shows that the certified letter was returned. It was two notices were sent from the post office, and it was returned on May the 30th and resent first-class mail. And then you see the copy of...photocopy of the letter as it was returned back to the PSC. So they...the Public Service District, for whatever reason, didn't even pick up the certified letter from the PSC. So that comes to my letter that you may have seen and may have read there, and I'll just read it briefly so those in the audience can hear. I said, "I would like to update you with the most recent developments regarding FOIA requests that I made personally to the Lincoln PSD at their monthly meeting on April 26th. I finally received a message on June 1st, and after returning the call on Monday, June 4th, I was told at that time that the documents were ready for pickup. I picked up the information later that day, and with the help of others in the community, the examination of the documents began. It was never communicated to me what I would or would not receive from the PSD. And still, nothing was ever communicated to me in the beginning or even when I picked it up as to what I received. I did not receive everything that I requested, and...but even a quick glancing review of what I did receive raised some serious questions. Some of the documents that were concerning have been attached for your review. It has taken over a month for me to receive only a portion of my request, and because of the PSD's inability to provide information on a timely basis and because serious red flags have been raised by the documents that they have provided, I'm here tonight asking the County Commission to contact the Public Service Commission and to request a general investigation into the financial, managerial, and operational activities at the Lincoln Public Service District. I would also ask that this request be made as soon as possible, and the County Commission keep me informed on this matter." That is my request to the Commission as a whole tonight. And to go on to some of the things that we found just in the small bit of information that we received. And the first one, I believe, would be a BBMT statement. I'm having a hard time understanding why a PSD has purchases on a credit card for PayPal. And if you'll notice, I think it come through there, there are actually three PayPal charges on that...well, no, actually, I'm sorry, four PayPal charges on this particular bill.
Have you...have you asked...
No, I have not. I just got this stuff...I just got this on Monday, and I would be quite honest, like, when I call, information is not forthcoming. And I've asked for calls back...Sarah has called me back. But again, she called me to let me know to pick up the information, and I was never told what I was going to receive, what was in the pocket. I just had to literally...
My question is that I know that you have this concern, and I understand that, but giving damn time, I guess, I may not need it.
Well, and that's fine. I mean, that's why I'm bringing it...yes, that's why I'm bringing it up. I would like to hear from you. The next thing, again, and I applaud, again, the work that has been done. I can actually say that I didn't have water this evening before coming to the meeting, but for a good reason this time, that the lines were actually moved. And I'm hopeful that when I do get back home, I will have water, and I appreciate that. I think the PSD...
Is that a nice little area?
Yes. The lines have been worked on there. The work started on Monday, I believe, and we were without water this evening, but when we came through, it looked like that it was either ready to come on or would come on at any time.
I hope so. That's a show of that.
So I do appreciate that. But what also concerns me, we talked about grants and money, and, oh, my goodness, would we not love to have an upgraded water plant? But I think that to have an upgraded water plant, we have to be judicious about the way we spend our money. And I have...my concerns are that money is not being managed in a judicious manner. The next page, you'll see, and it's always been my understanding, especially with the PSC, that food and such is, like, kind of a no-no. PSC, that food and such is, like, kind of a no-no. We have a charge for sixty-three seventy-five on a credit card at Kentucky Fried Chicken. And the next page, you'll see actually two things. You'll see the, the Walmart charge was the same day of, as the, which was for two liters, and that was the same day of the, the rather large, what, sixteen-piece meal, an eight-piece meal at Kentucky Fried Chicken. The next thing I have is, and it appears that, you know, this could possibly be legitimate, but again, this bothers me, because if you'll notice down to the bottom, this was shipped to a private address. It was not shipped to the PSD. It was paid for with a PSD credit card, but it was shipped to a private, a private address. And there are also, the next one that really, I mean, I know we need to keep tools or whatever safe, but there is, as best we can figure out, three, because if you can tell, one of the, the bottom receipts was not very legible, so we are assuming they're the same price, the same last couple of digits, but three mega storage at basically three hundred dollars apiece. That's a thousand dollars, I guess, to, I don't know, to take care of, to keep tools secure. I'm not sure how many tools that, that would or would not hold. The next card is also another charge that was shipped to a private address. And again, some of these things, these are just kind of haphazard, because this next one you see, it says January two thousand eighteen. These are charges from January, which would have more than likely been on a February credit card statement, but we didn't receive a, a February credit card statement. These were, and I understand that sometimes they go to meetings, training classes, testing, I'm not sure. But these next charges were for all food in the Beckley area. And it's always been my understanding, any experience that I've had with, with companies, whether it be public or private, if you're going somewhere in, you know, on behalf of a company, that they do, they don't expect you, you know, to use, to, you know, pay for it, you know, in the end, out of your pocket. But most generally, you are expected to pay for it out of your pocket, and you, or, and have per diem, and you're reimbursed for that. But these were actually on a credit card, so I'm not sure how that works out. Again, we had five guys, it looks like several people ate, so we don't know who. We can tell by the last four numbers that that is actually Randall Don Tabor. That's who all of these charges, I believe, were from. There was some type of, again, some of them we can't see completely. Different times of the days, breakfast, lunch, dinner. There's tutors, there's tutors and booters. And there's Dicky's Barbecue Pit. And there was a Mexican restaurant for sixty-eight dollars that, nothing is itemized on it, so we don't know how many people ate. We don't know, we don't know what that was for. So the next one would be, again, all, again, the next one is also food in the Beckley area at the Chivers. That was another forty-seven dollars. And another one at someplace in Beckley, on the next page, under the Home Depot receipt. And keep in mind that these might seem a little haphazard, but these are the way I, that we received them. We copied what they copied, they gave to us, so that's a little haphazard there. So I apologize for that. But, so those, that's an awfully large expense to me for food and things that, I'm not sure if, when you all go to training, I'm not sure how you all handled it, or handled that, but I would think that you would be given an amount and reimbursed for it later instead of using a county credit card to, to pay for, for your meals and such. So the next thing, this was the, this is what I received in the way of payroll. And I asked for hire dates and so forth. So, and I really can't learn a whole lot from this. I don't know what wage, I don't know what the wages are. And the concerning part would be the overtime for me. Now, I do understand with a water company that sometimes emergencies exist, and it's necessary for them to have overtime with the old crew. Obviously, if a break happens in the middle of the night, we're not gonna, you know, we don't expect them to let it, let it go. We expect them to respond and, you know, possibly, you know, have to pay them overtime. And I also understand, especially when, in our area, when the slip happened, that, that took additional hours in the plant to pump tanks full and so forth. So I, I do expect the guys in the, in the, the plant itself, the operators, I do expect them to have overtime. What I don't expect to see is three hundred and eighty-four hours overtime in a year in the office. This is like, is it an eight-to-five? I'm, I'm not sure what hours they work, but nine-to-five job, let's just say that. It's a nine-to-five job, and I'm not certain why someone who is in the office would have overtime hours of that. That, when I worked that out, I believe that came to thirty, somewhere around thirty-two or thirty-four hours per month that this person was getting for overtime. And I just thought that was a little high, being that previously, the office had operated with one full-time person and two part-time people. And now, now there are actually three full-time people in the office. And I thought, I just thought that was, you know, maybe a little, quite a bit of overtime for that, you know, being in that office there. The next thing comes down to the, the meetings. We got a printout each for, for each one of the members. Now, you see on the bottom of the first one, which I think is Bruce's, but we just, I just put it on the bottom of that one, just so, just so you would know. There were three meetings in four different months, okay? Those three meetings, they had, they had three, three meetings total, in the month of May, month of August, month of October, month of November two thousand seventeen. So if you'll look up there, you'll see, you can differentiate between the, the meetings. You can tell the regular meetings, they're paid an amount of a hundred and fifty a meeting. So on a normal month, when they have their meeting, they get paid a hundred and fifty. So for each additional meeting they have in a month, they get paid a hundred dollars. So on a meeting, on a month that they have three meetings, we're looking at three hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars a month there. So, and again, I have all three of that. I was, I was provided that from, from the PSD. And again, down at the bottom, I think I mentioned at the beginning, I had missing minutes from regular and special meetings. I had no meetings for, or I had no minutes from January two thousand, I'm sorry, July two thousand seventeen, and I had no meetings for February two thousand eighteen, regular, regular meetings. In the special meetings, I won't name them off, there, there are quite a few, I guess ten, ten meetings altogether that were special meetings that I did not have minutes for. And this one, I have to apologize, and actually, this is probably the most unsettling to me. And for some reason, I asked, I begged Mary to copy these, and I didn't get this to her. I found this on, in my folder. So I'll just pass this through here. The bottom page is just two more, I mean, there are numerous charges for, for gas stations on here. Some might be, some might be a dollar ninety-nine, which, it's hard to think that somebody would get gas for that, but then some are forty-nine dollars, eighteen dollars, thirty-eight dollars, thirty-seven dollars. And each of these, the one you'll see on this page, are broken down by account holder. So I'm not sure how they keep control of how much is spent on gas, and that concerns me. I know there were some, there were some guidelines in place previously that, where they were able to keep better track, or they were able to keep track of that, I know. I'm not sure if there's something now that I don't know of. Maybe they can enlighten me. But the one thing that is concerning on the top copy here, and I'm really, this is the one that really threw me off track. I'm not sure why the Lincoln County Public Service District needs an Amazon Prime membership at a hundred and four dollars and ninety-four I need that, yes, I need that for box.
Yes.
So I guess what I'm here to say is that I have concerns, and again, I, I would like to hear, you know, and if this is something that they're not aware of, I'd like to find out, you know, what the plans are, or why this, why this is happening, why there isn't more of a watchful eye on the spending. And because as, as members of the board, I would think that they are, they should be watching this type of thing, and they should be setting guidelines to keep this sort of thing from happening. With that being said, I think there is one way that we can determine exactly what is going on. And I would like to see the Commission vote to request investigative audit with the PSC. I think that way we can get a...
You mean of the PSD, by the PSD?
Yes, by the PSD, of, of the PSD. So that way, obviously, that's neutral. I, I can't, you know, you know, I wouldn't expect to try to look at things and try to point fingers, but I have concerns, and I think if, if the Commission contacted the PSD and asked for an audit of the PSD, I think that would go a long ways in allaying the fears that people like myself in the community have. And, you know, again, if there's nothing to be found, there's nothing found. But if there is, then it can be brought to light, it can be dealt with.
Now, it's, it's my understanding you already requested a form, you filed a formal complaint against them?
Yes.
And the PSC wasn't at Charles' last meeting, representative was? Okay. Hey, Gary, the credit card you all use, is it through the PSD? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
So it's governed by the same laws as the County Commission's credit cards and things like that?
We tried to get a P-card, and to my understanding, we could not get a P-card. It's what we wanted. So we, and, and the reason that we went to a credit card, we had it set up, it was pre-me, it was set up where they got gas at Runyon's.
Was it Pizzol?
Snowco. And the problem was running into, if they're in handling work, and then they need gas, they just have to drive to Alom Creek to get gas. So it just didn't make good sense. So we looked at getting a credit card. We wanted to get a P-card, is what we was hoping to get, but to my understanding, I personally didn't work on, but I was, it was reported to the board that they couldn't, we couldn't get a P-card. So BB&amp;T, they was contacted, they came into a board meeting, talked to us, and we went to a credit card. And thoughts of the board was give it to the supervisors. And if I may, I can comment on a couple of them.
Yeah. Well, what I just want to add about particular things is, you know, it's, I mean, you know, and I, I think it's okay for you to comment on, but the only thing I'm against with the PSD investigating, with this information just being brought to your attention as far as her concerns, it might be best if the board would look at her concerns and respond to them in a likewise manner. You understand what I'm saying?
I'd like to at least respond to the couple that I personally know, since it's been a while.
That would be fine. I just didn't want you to, you know, put yourself in jeopardy.
Yeah.
Because this is all record. You understand what I'm saying?
We have nothing to hide. You know, if somebody wants to come in, audit the books, I personally don't have a problem with it. The Amazon Prime, Don Tabor was hired, he's an electrician, and he was with us for a year or so. And we was giving, to my understanding, again, I, I have a day job, I'm not there during the day, but what was reported to the board, they was giving maybe twenty dollars, maybe fifty dollars for little relays and stuff. And he went online and was buying that stuff offline, stuff that we had been given like twenty-five dollars for, and he was getting for six dollars or seven dollars. And that's where it come up. The online prime happened, I think, just a few months ago, and it actually happened to me personally. I went on Amazon and ordered something, and apparently, there's a box on Amazon, if you don't uncheck it, it automatically charged you, because I got like a hundred and two dollars, somewhere around a hundred and two dollar charge on my personal credit card. And, and I called them, and they said, "Well, you signed up for Amazon Prime." Well, no, I didn't, and I didn't use it. But when that come out on the, on the charge, the office manager caught it, brought Don in, and wanted to know what in the heck's going on. And he didn't know. And I said, "Well, that just so happened, happened to me a couple months ago." So they went on and canceled that, and the next statement should show on there that it was refunded, is what that was. There's, and the...
Do you have anyone that audited your credit card usage?
Our office manager goes through it every month. The employee has to bring receipts in, and she goes through whatever miles. This, this one, Kentucky Fried Chicken, I don't have my eyes with it. I think it was September the sixth.
Nine-six.
Nine-six. I'm not for sure on that, but do you know?
You know, I'm not sure. I know there was several occasions when we had a huge water break there at the facility, and I didn't charge it on that. I actually paid a couple of those meals out of my pocket, the workers, because they had been there, you know, practically all day and half the night. So...
We would have to get...
And I bought chicken, I bought, I think Granny was there, I bought several drinks and so forth, pour them ice and so forth, the workers' water, that type of thing.
We're not, I'm not for sure exactly what that is. We'd have to look at her calendar and stuff. But we, we tell the guys, you know, sometimes they'll work all day long, and on their way home, they may get called back out. And we tell them, "If you're out there all night long, and you get hungry, go get you something to eat." And our supervisors has credit cards. I'm not for sure exactly what that one is. We'd have to look, the boxes, the tools...
You have several charges from Beckley, obviously.
Okay. Well, let me, if, if I may, I'll go through them as they're in order here, so don't get... The, the boxes at Sam's, we truly, we, the board truly believed that they was meters, but we know meters was coming up missing. And we went and bought boxes to lock our meters up, because we truly had great concern where the meters was going. So they was locked up, and only a couple people had keys, access to the meters, what that was for. And then one of them was for tools. We had, we was having trouble with tools, allegedly. And again, I'm not there day to day. We're just, the board goes on what's reported to us. But that's what those boxes was for. One meter is about three hundred bucks. Now, if you get a couple meters missing, that pays for the box to keep it locked up. That's what that was for. The Beckley charge... The Beckley charges, we sent three employees to Beckley for a week for training for operator.
Did they get certified?
Well, they went down there for training to, it takes, being a water operator, it takes four thousand hours and you gotta pass three tests to get your license to run. And it is, in the PSD, it is a nightmare.
And it's not just with us either, I mean, it's statewide with, you know.
You'll hire employees to train them to be a water operator.
Uh do you, do you have minutes where you approve their training and things like that? The PSD approves their training?
Yes.
Okay. Is that usually what we do when nine-one-one needs something, we approve their training and ahead of time? So we have documentation and what they do?
I will say, unless it was in a missing minutes, I I saw no mention of any training being
And I may have misspoken, give, I won't swear one word or the other.
There is a, there's a certification goes with that and the certification is documented at the PSD? Is there a copy of the certification?
All three of them failed the test.
Alright, there you go.
But what I was gonna say is, to get operators, you, it's almost impossible to hire a water operator. You have to pretty well create them in-house. And and we've hired two or three people and put them in training as operator. It seems like any employee can fake it for ninety days. I mean, you get them working, they're there for ninety days and then they start going a little bad and you start working with them. Well, next thing you know, you've got six months or twelve months invested in these employees. And then it's like, do we start from zero again or do you keep work? I mean, it's, I, you all deal with, I mean, when you deal with hiring and stuff, it it's um, you know, statistics show that about fifty percent of everybody you hire don't work out. That's just, you know.
Do you know if the other PSDs around the state use the P card or not? Or they all been told they couldn't?
I haven't talked to other PSDs about the P card. I I stopped and talked to other PSDs about, you know, things that they're doing and stuff.
The only reason that we like it as far as the commission is that uh, you know, the auditors monitor it, the state auditor monitors it and if anything comes up, you know, normally jump on it and things like that. I didn't know if you guys, I mean, I guess your office will kind of watch as well as the law, things like that.
And and we're, we're, we're in growing pains also. We've got a lot of new people. We had, you know, bless her heart, God bless her to death, you know, Sharon Ryan was there for fifty years. Had done a wonderful job. A- and we had two, two ladies that worked underneath her. Well, basically, when, you know, when Sharon was leaving, we thought one of them was gonna move up and take over and they was approached and asked, but they didn't do it. So we had three people in the office and the senior person's been there for a year.
You harassed those people and ran them off. They worked if he, when they had the water bills correct.
I did not harass nobody, I'm not in that office.
You guys can address us, okay? Uh another question I had, do you read the bills, I mean, the meters monthly or do you estimate monthly?
No, they're read monthly.
Every month, okay. Uh because that was a concern I had when I was looking at the fact that some people were getting their base charge and things instead of it. I didn't know if they hadn't, you know, I guess those just hadn't met the level where they would increase that charge.
I mean, to my knowledge, that hasn't been brought to the office's attention.
Mine's read every month, I can tell you.
Well, they're read every month, but I'm
It does say zero water, but it has a charge.
That's the minimum charge.
The minimum charge?
That's what you pay every month.
So it does show zero water. I don't know what it is.
Well, now, theirs um probably
Now, now, many of those, if I can speak on that, uh many of those are people that have hooked up to the water, um especially like the river area and they have not, you know, they're paying the minimum fee, but they haven't run the line to their home.
Okay, this is, if, this is a person who, those three bills are from one person.
Dr. Vance, those are my bills. I've been on the water since ninety-five. I've been getting thirty-four, forty-one a month. I've had to call every time for them to come out and read my meter. I've gotten calls from other people who's getting that same bill. And I said, you need to call the office. They said, no, they're gonna charge me thirty-four, forty-one, we're gonna go through this circus again like we went through three years ago and I'm not paying the bill. I'll pay the thirty-four. If they don't know how to do the bills in the office, I'm gonna pay what they send them. This is my personal bill. That's what I've been getting every month.
Is there anyone else from the community who wants to speak on this?
I, I want to say one last thing. And Gary said, you know, he's more than welcome, people, somebody can come in and audit the books than he, that they have nothing to hide. I think the best, the easiest way to settle this is to go with the PSD and let the PSD come in and do the audit.
The PSD?
PSD.
Okay. That's alright.
Might be a little, I might
I did that for ten years, so I
But the PSD, let the PSD come in and audit.
Um Gary, when you took over, did you all have an audit done or anything like that? Or do you have audits done yearly?
There, I mean, a short answer, um they supposed to be done yearly. We have an auditor that we have hired probably eight months ago. And if you try to get P, getting PSDs audited are nightmares. It's almost impossible to find one that will do it. But um they haven't been done in a couple of years.
My concern is that the PSD is paying someone to come in and audit them.
Do what?
My concern is uh an auditor that is being paid by the PSD to come in and audit them. Why, why not go with the PSD? We know the PSD, I mean, they're, they're, no one's in their ear on either side.
Does state law require an auditor?
Right, right, but also
Is it a CPA?
A, a formal, the, the county commission.
Is it a CPA that does it? Because we, we can hire out. It depends on if the state tells us which year. Sometimes the state will audit us and then other times we hire out. I mean, we probably pay for CPA to do it as well. Quite outrageous that we do.
Well, and I think one of the things too is when you're using public money, you should, you know, you should always have a system in place to where you're audited by an independent source.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, and because, and not, not saying anybody's anything wrong, but I mean, that takes that out of the question.
Exactly.
Um I'm gonna go ahead and have her, the information you gave us today, I'm gonna have her enter it in direct. So I'll give you a copy, mother. Um and we, we have your responses to what, you know, like I said, I fully realize when things are brought up like this and you don't know exactly what happened when, it's hard to respond to those type of things. Um does the commission have anything they wanna add?
I think that um, I think that they need to have a chance to respond to this, to what you've said tonight, to your documentation. I mean, if, if, if that was, if that was on me, I would wanna have a chance to respond. So if I, if there's three hundred and twenty-three hours of overtime for secretary, I mean, if, for the year, I would like to know why, you know, why that's happening. But, but that has to come from them and I think that that needs to be addressed with them. And I think that these records need to be given and I think that, you know, that they need to have an opportunity to respond to. The other thing, just like whenever you have a training, um you know, they can put policies in place for a certain amount of premium. You know, if, whatever it is that, that they wanna do. If you wanna get fifteen dollars, you wanna get twenty dollars or thirty dollars a day, you can do that. But what I'm saying is, that's, that's that board, the board has to address that. Um from what I've seen, I'm just going through the list here. From what I've seen with the credit cards, the use of the credit cards, I've seen it two different ways. I've seen people use credit cards and take the receipts in for documentation. And I've seen people use their credit card and get reimbursed. I've seen it both ways. So, so I mean, for me, you know, that could be, you know, that might be the system that they're using. Um as far as the, you know, the meals, um you know, given the date, I think that they need to have an opportunity to respond. If there is something, if there was a water break on that day, if they're doing that. But the thing about it is, and what I'm getting at is, is that they are an independent board. And I know that they have to answer to the customers, but they are independent of us. Their regulatory body is the Public Service Commission.
Absolutely.
And that's fine. But what I'm saying is, if, if there are allegations of any type of malfeasance or anything like that, that needs to go to the Public Service Commission. But before any of that happens, I feel like that this needs to be addressed at the public, at the PSD meeting. And this needs, you know, this stuff needs to be aired out there. And if it, if there's not, if that doesn't take care of it, then, you know, then it needs to go to the Public Service Commission.
My problem with the whole situation is that when I made the request, um and I was told at the last PSD meeting by Gary that, uh because I complained I had not received any feedback from anyone, I didn't hear that I was gonna get anything, uh it was radio silence. I would call and I asked for him to call me back. I never got a ma- I never got a return call from him. Sarah did call me back, I was told they were looking at it. And I was told by Gary at the last meeting that, well, we accepted it. And we took it at the meeting and I'm like, okay, they took it at the meeting. No one said, oh, yes, we'll give this to you. No one called me back to respond within five days. Nobody said, well, you can have this, but you can't have this. Um nothing, and not even in the minutes of that meeting did it address the fact that I presented them with a FOIA request. And the fact that it took over a month, that was April the twenty-sixth, I believe. And June the first, I get a phone call saying that I can pick the information up. And then the information that I did get, uh again, was hyperventilating, missed. The, the, the copies, again, some things were legible, some things weren't. I got missing, uh I, I didn't get anything as to what, um what their expenditures were. And this is a public utility. So I'm like, why is that not readily accessible by me? And that's why, I mean, with the PSD, if the PSD doesn't audit, then it's not somebody that I'm telling them what to look for or what to do and it's not something that they're, you know, somebody that, and it's not public money. Because this is the PSD. PSD, you know, that, and that is their oversight, their body, their oversight.
What, what has been the response from the Public Service Commission from, from your, and what was, what was your complaint? Was your complaint what was stated like in this letter right here?
Um, well, oh, in the
What I'm saying is, was your
My, my complaint
Was it addressed by the PSD yet? Have they contacted you?
Okay, yes, they contacted me, but the PSD has not contact, they didn't pick up the letter. It's been returned, they should have received it, I, I would think they would have received it by now in first-class mail. Because, so the PSD is waiting for response from the PSD.
Whenever the, the person came from the Public Service Commission or the Public, Public Service District, did, did you address, did he address that? Did you talk to him about that?
At, at the time, that was
Was this afterward? Or did you file that afterwards?
No, 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 no. Um, no, the, the formal complaint, uh let's see, I've got my information. The formal complaint was filed after I gave them the FOIA request, because I wasn't receiving any
But did you file the public, did you file the complaint with the PSD prior to the PSD coming to the last meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I did.
Because it's, it's my understanding, I don't know for sure, but I, it's my understanding they're investigating anybody. They wouldn't have been there unless they notified the board and said, hey, we wanna, I need to talk to you about something. And I don't know, uh, I mean, that's what I understand. You know, I mean, they would not have been at that meeting, uh I wouldn't have thought just to wind up saying, well, we're gonna go to Allen Creek and I'm gonna attend this meeting. I mean, I think they had to, with your filing of your formal request, it may have been resolved with that filing. And, but now, uh it's, just as any regulatory agency, it's real hard to find out, you know, we can't call and say, hey, are you investigating the PSD or not? You know, I mean, because if it is an investigation, then we want that to proceed without it being, you know, skewed or whatever.
I've been told by the PSD that you all need to be the ones who request
Now, the PSD is these guys.
I'm, I'm saying, I'm
Yeah, I, I, I know, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure when you talk to somebody, it doesn't
I know, I, I've had a little world surgery, so But the, I contacted the PSD, filed the complaint. And I have sent in all of my things. I can get it online and I can look and see what has been added, if there's anything. And, and I, I look at that frequently. So when I looked Monday, I believe that was, that was when I saw that they, you know, that they, it had been returned to the PSD.
So you haven't had any, what has happened is, you filed the complaint, it's been logged, but there hasn't been a response from the Public Service Commission? That's what's, because that's what has to happen. Whenever you file a complaint, there has to be a response.
Yes, they, they'd be writing my response.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, they have to respond.
They have to respond.
Right. And that hasn't happened.
And, and that hasn't happened.
Um before I'm, before I'm good with like requesting an investigation, what I would like to happen is, I would like for, for the board to take this information. Um if there's a, a request for financial documents or anything like that, um please hand that to the, to them so that they can look at that. Um and, you know, and if there is, you know, if there is a problem, if a problem persists, if there's not any type of resolution. But I think that there needs to be time for a resolution to happen before we just jump in and say, listen, we wanna follow this investigation. I mean, that's, that's my feelings, they feel different, but that's how I feel.
It's, now, when we, when we're talking a general investigation, uh we're not, I, and it's not my intentions and from what I have spoken to the PSD, it's not, a- and I do not think people are stealing money, if that's what, that's, if that's what everyone thinks. But the investigation would be into the financial, the managerial and the operational part. It's not, it's basically to see, to, to check and see that those areas are being run the way the PSD mandates.
Well, and that's, you know, the, the thing that we look at with this, you know, it's basically, the last time we had the problem lost the two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars, it was misappropriated, whatever. We sent two letters to the Department of Justice asking them to investigate. And we didn't receive any response from them. Um and that's about as far as you can go in trying to say, look at this thing, see what happened with this federal monies and things. And we did not receive anything back. And that's why we, we sent a second one, because we didn't receive something from the first one. And I'm, there, there's a few things that I just wanted to address as far as you have your emergency number working now? Okay, okay. And you're, you're working on the strip, I mean, the slip over there, trying to get it fixed and things?
Yeah.
Um I, 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 you know, I don't know what, I, what I would like to do is get in touch with PSD, I mean, PSD myself or the commission, just to see if there is, if they will tell us if there's an ongoing investigation.
Can I ask you something? Before, when the two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, I came in at the teleend of that. Did you send a request up there? Because I know, K, Brenda, me, KK, there was a bunch of us went up there to a hearing, come as close to losing it. It was before I even took office, but I went with you guys. How, did, was there a request then for a formal, can you remember from the time?
Yes, I remember. Um what, what the, the Public Service Commission asked the county commission to send a letter. And that's when the letter was initiated to the, to the prosecutor
Yeah.
Up in Southern District. I wrote a letter and um received a phone call um from a law enforcement officer. And there was nothing else to do. That was it. I mean, and then we wrote another letter.
Well, and, and that, the key thing about that was the PSD asked us to do it. You know, it's, 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 it's um, there's a procedure you go through that we went through with the last people on the board and things like that, that we had to do. And that was handled by our prosecutor. And we had him contact uh those people on the board and things of that nature.
But did they do an audit, the PSD at that time?
No, no, well, you know, it's just like what we, I know, I know
I think they spoke to, um, they spoke to Griffin and Associates. They say they went through their books and handled it all back. I think they spoke to, um, they spoke to Griffin and Associates, they went through their books and handled all that for my understanding.
That's my understanding.
Did what?
That's my understanding is whether we contacted Griffin and Associates.
That's our CPG.
Did you get any written response from them, or they just say it didn't, you know?
They did not, from what I could understand, but as far as-
Well, I mean, that's what my question is, a quarter of a million dollars, you know? I mean, I know it was spent, but it wasn't spent on what the grants, I mean, what the monies were full, right?
I think, what I, I think Bruce was saying, I don't put words in your mouth, is that there was nothing written down. It's like there was no paperwork, like there was no financial statement, there was no general ledger, there was nothing. And that was the problem, is that it's hard, it's hard to do a, it's hard to, to audit someone whenever you have no documents.
And I think the, the PSC, their, their ruling, that the money was inadvertently placed into the wrong account that was spent on.
That money was-
That, that should be in the light. That's the, what I, what, the reason I wanted you guys to come in so we could kind of go over, uh, this type thing. We don't do anything with public money without putting it on paper. I mean, we don't, you know, this or that. There needs to be, in your personnel policies, and I'm just suggesting this, okay? I can't tell you all what to do. But there needs to be a mechanism to reimburse employees written out and follow with, with those type things. Uh, personnel policy should also include, you know, how you hire people, you know, what, and things of that nature, how you evaluate people. All these things have to be done. We, we try to do that here, and some of it, you know, in the last eighteen years has changed a lot. But if you, just because you don't have things written down, doesn't mean there wasn't something wrong done. And that's the problem I get into with handling this money, cause it's like, uh, I talked to Brenda there, and I said, you know, we don't have a quarter of a million dollars to give you all over there if something, you know, if something else would happen. We just don't have that now. Whereas we did at the time, even though it put us in a bind, we did have it. But it's bothersome to me personally, not as a commissioner, but just personally, that you can take two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars that you know was to be used on these, uh, water projects that Gary was mentioning, which we wouldn't have had the Bulger project or the Lower Mud if we hadn't given you all that two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. That wouldn't have went through. All those people did without water now. But because we didn't want to miss, do that to them, we went ahead and paid that. But it was my understanding that, and, and Mr. McCann was around too then, but I mean, it was my understanding that, uh, the, that if possible, the PSD would put itself in a situation where it could repay the county's money. Because we'd already given you all the two-hundred-and-sixty, I mean, we'd already gotten the two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars on the funding, which, uh, you know, every project in the last eighteen years, I've been involved with the funding of it. So, I mean, I, even before Gary was involved. But those type things, you can't, it's just like we try, there was an attempt to change some of the scope of the money we got from the ARC on the Ten Mile project. And, but if we changed the scope of that project, they would have took that money back, over a million dollars, one, one point five million back. They said, no, if you're not going to use it for what you applied for, we're going to decide what goes, you don't. So that's why it's important to keep within the scope of the project, and to make sure that you document everything and what you're doing and things. And, um-
Well, I think at that time, Commissioner Vance, um, one of the board members who was the chairman, you know, I think it was, a lot of those things were done and, and without a lot of the other, at least myself, with the knowledge of, of any of that.
Well, I, I think that's why, and I, I understand exactly where you're coming from, because I think that was part of the problem.
Generally speaking, that type of money, when it comes in, uh, which surprised me, and I thought, cause I, you know, I, pay very close attention to my emails, um, and I went through them with fine toothed calm many, many times to see if an email was sent. And I inadvertently looked over that kind of money being sent, and there was none. No email whatsoever sent, no letter at least that I received. Um, so, that being said, that, you know, that money, uh, generally speaking, when you have that, it is, you don't really get the check. It is actually sent from, and I believe that was R U S money, I'm not sure.
I think, uh-
That's what I was-
I think it was R U S money.
I thought it was U S, yeah.
It was R U S, but then we go to full U S.
But, but it surprised me, and, and generally, they send that straight to the engineering company. You know, we just get a copy basically of the check, but it wasn't. Um, you know, practically everything that, that we've done in the past, it goes straight, if that money is designated through that, it goes straight to, um, the engineer or whomever it might, uh, you know, agency sends that to them.
You know, I think one of the comments I have about that is, you know, you all sit as a board. I mean, no one of you all have more, more, can do anything about all of the others involved, okay? And you have to have a majority vote. Um, and no matter, you know, when you sit on these boards, uh, and you come into monies like that, you know, it's going to be all, all y'alls back, you know what I'm saying? But now, knowing who you're talking about, I'm, maybe that wasn't conveyed, but you know, it's just like when I, when I have something, when I, when I have something that comes before me as president of commission, I inform the other commissioners and we make a decision together.
In public, and we have it documented.
And I think that's, and, and, you know, I'm, I don't know if you guys attend the open meeting law, uh, things of that nature. That often helps you comply with that, but I don't, um, I just want to make sure that the people are drinking safe water over there, and that they have water when they need it, and that their, people are able to call them or get something reported, something done about it. I will make a comment as far as FOIA requests, as far as historically what we've dealt with here. Commission, is that, what do they have, how many days to file, five days? And then, they, if they can't get it all to you, there's, we send a letter saying we're working on it, and we have, need more time to get this done. And that's well within what you can do with that.
You have to respond in five days. You don't have to have it all completed on.
Right, you have to say, I have, you know, it's going to take a while doing things of that nature. And maybe, you know, and not having dealt maybe with a lot of FOIA, they didn't know to do that, you know what I mean? But, uh, and they still have time, the stuff that you're requesting that you didn't get, uh, they still have time to get you that, if that's what they want to do, you know?
That being said, as Commissioner Matthews said, uh, how long, I mean, I waited a month for what little bit I got, and as skewed as it was, how long did I wait for the rest of it? I mean, that, that's the concern. My concern is the oversight and the, the, the mismanagement. They, if we lose money, that could be spent on fixing the tank, you know? You saw the pictures of the tank. That problem still exists, and that is a major, major issue. And one from which I understand there's no funds for it this time. And again, I, nobody will give me, uh, any information on water loss, what their monthly water loss is. And I would think as a water company, that would be the first thing.
They'll try to turn that into the PSC, that's what I was thinking, so I-
At the end of every year. So, I mean, is it getting better? It was sixty percent at the end of the year last year. Is it getting better? We have no way of knowing.
Well, I would encourage, you know, if the, the information she requested, if you can possibly get that to her as soon as possible. And then, like, uh, Commissioner Matthews says, I think each of those problematic things you had, which was entered in record, they should respond to it, and I would think you should put it in writing, you know, it's, it's real easy to talk and say this is this, but-
Oh, you mean I should put it in writing?
No, I'm talking about the, the PSD put it in writing. Uh-
So you said you would call and say-
Well, what I, what I would like to do, if it's a commission, the commission's will, is go in and contact the PSC myself.
Just see what's there.
And ask them where they're at with it. And they may or may not respond, depend upon the type of investigation they're doing. Uh, but I would think that if it's just the run-of-the-mill type thing, they would say, yeah, we're investigating or not. Uh, before we would do anything as a commission, I would want to consult our prosecutor concerning, uh, the, like, uh, and this has to be done this way, we went through this before with our prior board, so I know this is what we have to do, okay? Because it's a legal issue. It's a legal issue whether we can, number one, get involved in an ongoing investigation. Uh, that's why I'm, I've, you know, we can't really respond to some of the things you're saying or he's saying, uh, because I don't know, uh, where we're at with an investigation right now. Uh, but I would check with the, before our next meeting, I would check, in fact, when I find out, I'll, I'll have Mary give you a call, and let you know what to say, yeah.
But previously, when we were bailed out, when you guys bailed us out of bankruptcy, I mean, we were so close that Bruce and I would not even sign a paycheck to any of the guys. We watched every dime that was spent. And what happened with the two-sixty-two was put into the regular account. It looked like there was a lot of money there. There were people hired that wasn't qualified. They were paid super amount of money, benefits, everything else. Uh, they were given money. Ten computers were brought into the office that weren't needed for a little PSD. Uh, there was a, probably an investigator hired to see how we could secure the premises, as if, you know, an invasion on the way. There were so, so many things, overtime, there was lots of overtime paid, there were tools bought. There was so much waste of money because they thought they had a lot, that money. And it just went and went and went, and so it was spent. And, and we're just afraid that's what's happening now.
Well, the commission, as I said, we don't have any money to bury out anymore, so that's why we-
No, you don't, and I want to see us go bankrupt.
We do want to try to get, of course, you know, to me, it seems like, you know, that, I don't know, and this is me personally, not to the commission, but that the documentation type thing needs to be better, the communication with the public over there about what needs, and I know Gary being busy and being gone and things like that, but you know, there needs to be, as these things have come up, they need to be addressed in writing to the people that are complaining about it.
Even the hiring practices, I mean, I've talked to one of the guys, and I'm, you know, anything about fixing a leak, he's, you know, I got hired because I need benefits. And that's no reason to hire someone if they need benefits, they're retired from, uh, the builder's construction. You know, how a pipe fitter, so make them fix a leak.
In the minutes, uh, there's, uh, one person being hired in that gets benefits immediately. Another person hired in gets benefits in thirty days. And then, I'm not sure, I think in the past I've been told that they have to be there ninety days to get benefits.
And that, that's why when I was talking about personnel policies, that all needs to be in writing, how you handle everybody the same.
And, and that also depends upon, there's different situations to, we've had a situation here, and I'm not speaking that this is the case, but we've had a situation here, there was a guy hired, and, um, he was retired, and he didn't need any type of insurance or anything like that. I mean, you know, no retirement stuff, there's, there's circumstances, and the only thing that I'm saying is this, is that, you know, they have, they have a copy of this, all right? Um, you have some, you have some information, is that, uh, I think that they need to have time to get this information, and I think they need to have time to give you a response before, before we do anything. That's my, that's the way I think. And I mean, and, and the thing about it is not saying that nothing will, will be done. I'm saying that I feel like that if I was in that situation, uh, that I would want an opportunity to respond. And just like if you came to the county commission and said, hey, listen, what's this, what's this, what's this? I want to have time to look at it, and I want to have time to get a response. Cause I know one thing, is that, you know, the people that work in the office over there, there's people that, you know, over there working, and I mean, you know, when you're doing your job, a lot of times you don't have time to do a lot of other stuff. And I mean, this is a lot of documentation to get. And I know we could be just looking in the file cabinet and taking, making photocopies and different things like that, but, you know, it's still time. And, and, and I would, would, what would be a good date? Could we set a date for, I mean, for, um, maybe response to this, or the rest of the documentation? Can we do that tonight? Or, or you don't want to do that and just call the-
We have to ask the, the office manager as far as their time of need.
The only, the only thing I would like is for the commission to have a copy of your response, so I can put it in the record with her questions about it. That way you all will have it on record, how you responded to her concerns.
I just have a quick question. I heard, uh, Mr. McAllister say they hired an auditor eight months ago. Is that the first auditor that's ever been hired by the PSC?
I, I don't know.
No. Okay, has there always been an auditor?
There, there was an auditor before, uh, the Fiasco of two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, he was fired. He was brought back in after that.
Okay, that's what I didn't know, if there was an auditor present or anything.
But, but he, but it was such a mess, he fired himself.
He fired himself, okay, okay.
Um, when's the next board meeting?
The, uh, whatever the, the fourth or the fourth of the last, uh, fourth Thursday in June, so, one of the days that you know, so.
Is it tonight, tenth?
Twenty-eighth.
Oh, the third?
Three weeks.
Or, fourth, not bad.
Yes.
I was on the third. But, um, um, could, could you talk to the office staff and see if we can get this information to her? Um, and, and a response, and then maybe, um, from, you know, you've got, what is it? You've got, you know, a few weeks, and then you all can get together and, and, you know, give a response to that. Uh, or explain, you know, you know, what this is and what this is. You know, just like with the, you know, a PayPal account, you know, you're buying through PayPal instead of buying at, at Bassada. I mean, you know, I can understand those things. I mean, that's, those things happen.
My main concern too is off of receipts, because you saw the amount of charges that were on the credit cards.
Well, I saw one receipt there. I mean, whenever I was looking for, I saw, yeah, and I saw one receipt for what it was.
Right.
And that's, I mean, that's why I was looking, because I, I thought PayPal was odd. I've never seen that before. You know what I mean? I've never seen Amazon before, but then I saw the receipt, and I saw what it was for.
And some of them, yeah, some of them, a couple of them did.
And I think that they need to have a response, you know, we bought this, just like he said, because it was cheaper, we could buy it here, and that's a good thing. And that's what you want to hear.
That's okay, but again, there were so many charges and so few receipts.
Well, that's, but that's what needs to be worked out. And I think that if, if you, if you come together and you have time, and you get things together, uh, get these things so that they can get a response, and then meet at the, uh, at the board meeting and just hash it out. I mean, that's, that's what you do.
Can they provide copies of the checks that they, who they're written to?
We, we asked-
Bruce, could you, could you do that?
Because they come on one page, like twenty on a page.
Well, he said he sure, that they can't, they should be.
And, I mean, I would think that there would be a ledger, ledger of expenditures.
I'm sure there's a general ledger, so.
And I would think that that could be printed out fairly easily, but.
So, as far as a resolution here, can we, um, give them time to get this information, the rest of this information to you? You can look at it, um, let them prepare. If you have questions regarding the rest of other information besides what you provided tonight, give them a chance to respond to that.
I don't have much choice, though.
Well, I mean, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, you could, you could say I don't want to do that, I mean, you do have a choice. You, I mean, it's up to you. I mean, I would think that this is a fair way to do it. That's all I'm, that's all I'm trying to do. And before we say, we're going to, you know, we're going to file an investigation, I think they need to have a chance to, to respond.
I felt like a month was more than enough to at least rece- receive a response, and I didn't receive a response.
Um, can, can she get a response for this? So we have a verbal commitment tonight? There we go.
So when will that response be, is what I'm asking. I, I don't want to wait another, another month to get my response.
You're going to, you're going to talk to your manager, and you'll find that, figure that out, and then will someone call her?
We'll have her call.
Okay.
Good, good, Gary, Gary, could you call me?
Can you start drinking with respect?
Okay, I want to say something.
Come on, come on.
I just want to say something. As a response, Gary complained about people trashing him. Gary, never once have I said anything bad. I have sat back and watched other people say bad things about you. I don't know you. I really don't. All I know is the PSD. So I have not said anything, I have not put you down in any way on any social media forum. I've referred to the PSD, I have referred to the, the board members, and I don't trash anyone. I, that's not the way I operate, and I hope that you haven't got, I mean, I know you didn't see anything because it wasn't out there, but I have not put anything out there underhanded and bad about you.
Yeah, I said you did.
Okay, uh, let's, let's go ahead and, and we'll pass this here. Um, so, we've kind of come to the agreement, you'll get that information, we'll get copies of it. Um, so, we've kinda come to the agreement, you'll get that information, we'll get copies of it, and then we'll go marry. What I'll do, I'll contact the P S C, find out what I can find out. I'm also, for public's information, I'm also gonna check on the credit cards as far as P S Ds, I guess Ds using those credit cards, P boards, uh, P cards, and I'll check on that and see if that's, uh, if we can run that down, because there has to be some type of independent accounting for the expenditures. Uh, the other things, I wanna check on audits to see what their, the state code says about audits from P S Ds, to see exactly what's required of the P S D for audits. Uh, and, uh, I think that's about it for right now. But, uh, we got, we gotta get through this, and we gotta do it right. And, and I anticipate all parties involved to do that. Uh, this, this, this can be personal, because when you're, you know, and, and we sit on this commission, we have people disagree with us too. But, we have done everything in our power to make sure that we document what we do, we have, we follow our personnel policy, we follow the business policy, we follow what the state auditor requires, and I'll find out exactly, because I don't know, I'll find out exactly what you guys are required to do as far as these things I'm talking about, the P card, the credit card, uh, the audits and things of that nature. Is there anybody else who wants to speak about this? But I do appreciate, uh, you all's input for coming, I do appreciate the work, for coming over here and talking with us, and us trying to work this out. It, it's, you know, it's a, it's a difficult situation, we know, especially with no more monies than we have. But, uh, that's why it's even more important to us to make sure we document expenditures, and make sure they're within the realm of what we're supposed to be spending money for. Is there any more unfinished business?
Nope.
Okay. You know, I mean, I, you have a new business outlined in front of you, is there any changes or that needs to be made on this? If not, I ask for a motion to approve the new business as presented, somebody... Okay, so I, okay, open discussion, do you have anything, Fisher Harms, do you have anything?
Uh, if you're, just make a comment, just, uh, been coming through Allen Creek, you see people running line outside the road, that's fiber optic line, the TV, just keep your heads up, that's all it's worth.
Yes.
Um, I've been asked by several people in the Harts area about who is paying the cost for the businesses that's in the Harts Community Center. Who's paying for the water, who's paying for the electricity, and you've had two restaurants, and you've had two big business, and a beauty shop, and things like that and there, and people approached me and asked, did they, I said, I don't know. So, I'm, I'm asking you.
The community, the community center itself generates those monies, the only thing that the commission's helped them with this year has been the payment of, uh,
Gas bill.
A gas bill, one month.
So, my question is, if there's a business operating in the communities, community center, do they have a separate electrics, electricity and water bill?
I don't know how, I don't know how they have that set up, you'd have to talk to the members of the board, and we just accepted a resignation of two tonight, so we're getting ready to advertise for community board members, and at least I'd encourage you to get your part of your community into that board and work with them. Uh, it's really hard to get people to do any volunteer work, in fact, uh, one of the persons, Mr. Farley, that we accepted as a resignation tonight, paid for one of the gas bills itself, nine hundred some dollars. That's what you have funding for, so...
Something's wrong, they're paying for it themselves, nine hundred some dollar gas deal, you have multiple businesses in the old school.
Well, no, I mean, they pay rent, these people pay rent, I don't know what the rent is, is, or, you know, what is included in that. But this was because we had the, the winter that went so long, and things of that nature. And we didn't, we, we paid for some one time, but he needed more, and we couldn't do it, uh, and so, uh, we didn't approve anything for him, and so, uh, he took care of, instead of closing down those businesses.
Well, what is the, the county commission's, uh, support for the Harts Community Center, and what, financially? And what is your all's support for the McCorkle Community Center?
We have the, we have established, uh, a fund that you can donate to if you want, businesses to donate to, and we take those monies, uh, which we had to use, uh, for the McCorkle, some of the, for the McCorkle there, because of the gas and electric bill, and things like that. And, but we give them, uh, no money except from that fund, or if there's an emergency situation that comes up, the commission will review it, and see if we can help, say they, you know, didn't, uh, they had something that would keep them from operating, that we can take care of, that we had money to do, which we don't have any money, so it's really hard to, to do that, but, uh, and we, we have tried to, uh, as best we can, to make sure that we support each, each McCorkle, uh, McCorkle and the Harts Center as best we can. But we have, um, you know, as far as I know, the, the monies we give the Harts Center was the last we've given quite a while, if I remember, over a year, maybe, maybe a year, better, over a year.
Do you have any rough estimate per year?
No, but you could, uh, join that board up there and find all that out.
Well, does that board, should, does that board provide you minutes to the county commission for their, for their money?
No.
No, we...
I don't know.
They don't provide minutes.
No, they did provide the bills, though.
Yeah, they provide the bills.
The bills that they had to pay that they didn't have monies for, they did. But we don't, uh, that's one of the things I'm checking on with these audits, because I know, uh, we have to have audits from just about everybody we deal with, that deals with money from us, and, uh, but I, I can say right now that, uh, they have tried their best, I mean, I know that, that they've got these, they recruited these people in to run these businesses, and they're charging, I don't know what they charging, so I don't know if they're charging enough to cover the road, and I don't know. But, uh, that's something that Harts, and I don't know about McCorkle, and maybe Fisher Harms, you speak to him, but I know, uh, Harts needs more communities, people on that board, they need not just four or five people trying to do everything. And, uh, uh, you know, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Haas for the job he's done up at Harts there, he's really worked hard, and he's put in a lot of time, and, and, uh, I really appreciate the job he does, and, and all, uh, I thank my wife too, she was on the board, and I don't wanna thank Haas without thanking her, and I'll find out about it when I get home. But, uh, but it takes community participation, they don't get any monies for doing that, uh, and there's a lot of things they have to deal with that. If we had ten, fifteen people up there on that board that could help, it would make a big difference in that community. But I, you know, and I hate to be a, you know, saying things are gonna get worse, but I think unless we do that, uh, that community center might close. So, we need really community participation in that, yeah.
Speaking on the McCorkle Community Center, I know the last few commission meetings, they've been sending out a mind report, managed their expenditures, their cash in, the bill, donation, whatever. Well, in the last three meetings I've been, I think, they've sent out a, uh, special bill, or, or...
Harts, yes. They seem to think as far as their...
Yeah, they seem to be...
Oh, that last, okay. All right, anything? All right, I appreciate everybody sticking around and everything, and, uh, I hope we get some resolution of this, and we need, and we need to do it as, uh, as efficiently as possible. Eyes for...
Go ahead.
May I say something briefly, please? Uh, I've been sitting here thinking, I've been to the last two, uh, monthly meetings out at Allen Creek, and, uh, I'll say it was entertaining, uh, not always pleasant. My grandfather raised me, and he, he always gave me nuggets of wisdom that have helped him through life, and I'd like to just share one with everyone. One of his nuggets was, uh, he'd say, "Son, people don't do things to you, they just do things." And a lot of times we personalize events and situations. This lady, I don't know her, but I met her a couple months ago, briefly, but, uh, she was asking questions. These three men here, from my observation, are just doing the best job they can. And, yeah, there's some things that may need to be put in place, but her questions, I hope they don't personalize them any longer. And I hope their responses, that this lady doesn't personalize their responses. And, and maybe we can move forward, and with your all's help, get some things in place, I've heard some real good suggestions and questions, and moving forward, have a plan in place, and I appreciate you listening to that, so, if you will, I mean, that person pulled in front of me the other day when I was pulling, they knew I wanted that parking spot, and they pulled right in there.
No, they didn't know that.
My grandfather reminded me, just, like, oh, he said, "Glenn, people don't do things to you, they just do things." And a lot of times, that's, that's what we need to remember, that, well, everyone.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Eyes for motion adjourned till...
July...
July fifth, six P M. Also, we stand adjourned, thank you all.
Well, I don't even know what level four means, but I wanna know.
That'll be me, though.
I know, I know, people up in there, everybody's tired, but most people, it's one, two, and she's four, and she's a overweight, operating retire, and we're gonna have their caller, and refer to, is that a C F O D M? Okay. All awfully, there's nothing wrong, but I can swear to it, we, we personally are all going, we're going. But something's got to be up here, it's... If, if, if this is what we keep going, we're all three of us, I mean... Well, no, we... That name is...
Uh, I don't understand, I mean, they say that...